Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 11th, 2022 Planning Board Meeting. We could please first stand for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first, we're gonna start with correspondence, which we have some. If they have any issues or anything they want to go over.
None did I see.
Good? Okay. Okay, we're gonna move on to the meeting minutes of March 28th, 2022. Any issues or corrections?
None that I saw.
Mm-hmm. Not here yet.
All good?
I need the acceptance.
Second.
Whoever.
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna move into the regular portion of our meeting. First on the agenda, we have Village Traditions. This is a request for a one-year time extension. Location is 1821 East Main Street. I think Mr. Mallon cannot be here.
Mr. Mallon cannot make it tonight, no.
That being said, any issues? So we'll just pretty straightforward. Any issues from the board?
No.
John?
No issues here.
No issue.
none here as not yet. All right, then. Being said, do I have a motion for the request for a one-year time extension for Village Traditions?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries. We're gonna move into the work session. First on the agenda is the Grijazs' major subdivision. This is a discussion. Location is 3319 Stony Street.
Hi, everybody.
How are you?
Good. I requested to be on so we could see if we can come to a conclusion on whether or not we're extending Shelley into the project. And I think we've submitted some information previously. I think John Tegger also provided you with some background. And we're looking to move that forward.
So, the last meeting, I think it was gonna be a meeting with yourself, highway superintendent, and everybody. Did that happen?
That never happened.
Okay. Did you ever have a discussion with him and what?
I did not myself, but I believe.
We did.
Okay. So we wanna work through what?
Well, yeah, I had a discussion, Robin and I, with highway, in fact, more than one, in which we discussed the issue. We discussed the code requirement that the fire commission has made us aware of. And we also discussed the, you know, best practices related to planning and so on and so forth. He is not vehemently against the connection, as it appeared as he was at the beginning.
Okay.
You know, of course, he is concerned about the neighbors and the neighborhood and wants them to be, you know, respected as much as possible, but understands that the code prevails and that the connection and safety is above most importance. I think that best summarizes it. I did offer to have a meeting with Joe and so forth and discuss it. And he says, no, I think I'm fully understanding what the issues are. And, you know, he declined to meet further.
Okay.
Because we did have two discussions on it, myself. So I think he's willing to possibly put, you know, a small thing in writing, but that's basically his summary.
Okay. So basically, between the code requirements, the fire department, has the police department weighed in at all?
No.
Okay. So it sounds like to do this per code, there has to be that connection.
Fire code requires that planning practice makes high recommendations to not have long dead ends without turnarounds for the same reasons and others.
Okay.
So our recommendation is to make the connection.
Any questions on our end?
Not here.
I used to live on Judy Road in that neighborhood many, many years ago, before any of the streets were connected through there. And I drove over there over the weekend just to see what it was like. And I see that the, which one is? Spruce is now goes all the way through. That's the next street west on Judy Road.
Correct.
So that cuts through into the next neighborhood. And I didn't see any real issues with going through. I also read some of the materials that were provided to us, which talked about the pros and cons of these kinds of things and how your thinking, the thinking of planning people has changed over the years and to see some value in connections rather than a lot of dead-end streets. Promoting more local traffic, giving different access, multiple opportunities to get in and out of areas instead of concentrating in one place. So I think rather than, I think it'll diffuse the traffic in that area more than concentrated, which is probably a good thing for my family.
I agree with you. I drove up there about a week ago.
Uh-huh.
And I feel the same way.
Okay.
No, you, you're right. You're telling ahead. So what's up, Joe?
Sounds like we're gonna proceed that way.
Make the connection?
Okay.
On the same page.
So we'll proceed that way.
Okay.
Good.
Do you have any objections?
This is gonna.
This is just a work session.
This is gonna be tested. This is gonna go out to public hearing, I presume?
Yeah. We're ready to go to public hearing. We've prepared mitigation, wetland mitigation plan. We're incorporating the changes we discussed the last time where we talked about trying to save some trees and we're gonna have to go for a zoning variance, some frontage variances in order for that to happen.
Right.
But otherwise, we feel like we're ready to go to a public hearing.
Is that the public hearing?
Yeah.
What are we looking at?
What about your environmental review for those wetlands?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are we gonna get our consultant to look at it too?
We can do that. I mean, I wanted to wait until you knew if you were connecting the road because that's a big part of it.
Then we're not ready.
All right, so why don't we move towards that, though?
Yeah.
I think you gotta stay consistent with that.
Yeah.
Especially because we know that residents are gonna come out. There's gonna be questions about the traffic and that end of it.
Right.
And you guys will have an opportunity once there is a public hearing. Once there's a public.
It's very hard to hear you.
No, I understand. Once there is a public hearing set, you'll have the ability then to come up. It'll be on the record, any objections you have to the subject. Okay?
Yeah, just a quick question. That has nothing to do with what was discussed, but we can't hear you. I don't know if your microphones are on.
Can you hear us?
No one seems to be talking to them into the microphone.
Usually they're.
We're not amplified.
You're not?
These are for the TV.
Yeah, it's just the TV.
So then anyone who's sitting here can't hear you?
There are, and I should announce that we do have hearing-assisted devices, I think. If anybody can't, does have a problem.
I have no hearing problem. I just can't hear you if you're just talking between yourselves.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know. Try to project more. All right, so we'll work on the environmental end, and then once we get a handle on that, we'll move forward. Okay? Is it in that one? Okay, next, we have a new item, the Dorchester Glen subdivision. This is a discussion of the subdivision. Locations 1643 Maxwell Drive. Joe Rena?
So the, we're representing John and Elaine Kinkart. They own 24 and a half acres, which is, let me just get this in a little closer here. Have it up on the screen. This is the, this is the outline of the property here. To the west, it's bordered by the Dorchester Heights subdivision. And there's an extension of right-of-way that abuts the property here to the, on this, this point here at the west. This area back in here is the Grange Fair. You have Maxwell Drive coming in at the north end of the property. This is the residence of the Kinkarts right here. To the south, you have the open space that was part of the Hanover East subdivision. And that abuts, again, that abuts the Kinkart property. And as you could see, near the Solmer's line here to the right.
Mm-hmm.
So as I said, they're, they have 24 and a half acres. And just close this. Okay. They have 24 and a half acres, which, I don't know how well you can see this, but that's the overall property there. The, when I get to the actual subdivision plans, I'm cutting, I'm gonna cut off part of the property. But this is the overall property here. There's, there's a D E C wetland on the east side of the property over in this area. There's a, a water course that comes in, or wetland that comes in off the back of the Dorchester Heights subdivision. And the retention pond for the, detention pond for the Dorchester Heights subdivision is right here. This is, again, the Grange and Maxwell Drive here. So the proposal is to create four additional lots. The property is half-acre zone, R120. The, we have done a few scenarios for this. We've been able to, in a, on a conventional layout, get up to 13 lots on this. The Kinkarts are not interested in this. They're trying to maintain the character of the Dorchester Heights subdivision and have larger open lots. So the first sheet that you have in front of you, which is the conventional layout, is based on current zone standards for R120. Most, most of the lots are an acre at least or more. This one is a little smaller than that. The, as shown here, we would be extending the town road from Dorchester Heights Drive here into the property, ending in a cul-de-sac. Ending in a cul-de-sac, and you could see how we're splitting off the various lots. This is the, this lot would contain the existing residents for, that the Kinkarts live in. The project would be served by water, sewer, and gas, if that's available. Again, this area back here is the D E C wetland. There's a stone wall that delineates, for the most part, the upland side of the property and the wetland. And this is the 100-foot buffer. As you can see, we're, we're well away from that. What the Kinkarts would like to do is, they would like to go under the town flexibility standards. That would allow us to shorten the road, go with a narrow width road, and give us a little more flexibility in the layout of the houses and driveways so we can place the houses in some of the nicer areas on the property. So this, that's what this layout shows. It also shows along the whole side of the property to the south would be about 11 acres of open space. Now, the importance of this is it's connected, as I said, to the open space on Hanover East. Gives you a connection almost to the Grange Fair, or to the Grange Fair, rather. And that could further make a connection from Hanover, Hanover, all the way into town, once all the pieces are put together. So if, if the planning board is inclined to like what we're doing here and in favor of this concept, we want to, at some point, get to the, to the town board to ask for the flexibility standards to be given, empowered to the planning board.
Any thoughts from the board?
Well, I think, under the flexibility, I think the project looks a little nicer from the, to the maps. So I think, I don't know. You'd have to really search it out, but flexibility looks nice.
I would support, I would support that position. I would suggest we send a memo to the town board stating that we would like them to consider the flexibility favorably.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would support that. I mean, thinking of this being 13 homes versus the three or the four that are suggested here, it's a good use of it.
Thoughts?
Gonna have a lot of space, too.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I would suggest that you consider doing a referral to all the usual agencies first and getting some feedback. You know, some environmental feedback, et cetera, et cetera, before you send it to the town board. They have a little bit fuller information.
All right. Jim?
Nothing from me.
So we will refer it out?
Yeah.
Okay?
That's reasonable. Okay?
Okay.
Good?
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Good night. Thanks.
That's it?
That's it. I'm done. Well, I have some other stuff at the end, but I, I don't know if I'm gonna stay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Get the rest of the night out.
Cut out, huh? Okay, next, we have the par three golf courses back. This is discussion of tree mitigation. How are you, sir?
How are we doing today?
Good, yourself?
Let's see y'all.
You too.
Did y'all get the updated map today?
Yeah, it's in the book.
This afternoon.
That's what I just.
You got an email or in the.
I was looking at another one. Is that this one?
That's it.
Yeah.
As you know, we met with the Conservation Board not too long ago, last week, and they had some good suggestions. So we wanted to edit, edit this, this map a little bit to echo the suggestions that were brought up. They wanted a schedule of planting, so we added that. And they also wanted the scientific names of the different plants. They did ask to maybe bring in some other trees, but the trees listed here, it's all because of root system. So the root system at the old golf course, if you remember, not very deep roots, very shallow roots. And some native plants, some native trees aren't appropriate for a golf course. So we're gonna probably stick with these two trees.
Comments from the board?
And then the, they had a good suggestion along the water course, throw multiple types of tall grass in there.
Yeah.
So we're gonna look to do that as well. And that's on the top of the map, listed the scientific names.
Concerns?
No, the only question I have for you, Jim, I don't, I don't know if you know, they, they recommend native hardwoods and evergreens. And you want to stay with a couple of species that are not necessarily native. That what, what are they? And do you?
They are the giant troopa. I'm gonna mess up the common name, and the, the Norway spruce.
Okay.
Is that first one an arborvitae?
I think it is.
Is it?
I believe so.
It's. Nounization.
Nounization.
I just have a question. Jim, when, when this was presented earlier, the, I just wanna talk about the slopes next to the stream.
Yep.
Up in the corner of the plan, that, that's something that's been modified since the Conservation Board meeting?
Where, by number two?
No, I'm in the, on the chart you just.
Do you mind if I go up? Yeah, he's on the detail.
Talking about.
Yes, that was my point, yes.
Okay. Just because I, fescue has got a very shallow root system also. And it may not be as appropriate as some of the, as these grasses were. And I'm glad you added them.
Yeah.
Right? So is it gonna be a mix of all three now?
Correct. Yes, it'll be a mix, a mix of all three, grown tall.
What's?
I just know that the recommendation was not to use fescue 100%. I don't know whether.
Yeah, and they're not going to use 100%.
Yeah, it looks like a mix of three.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good suggestion, and they're gonna use it.
Okay.
All right, so basically, you went with what the Conservation Board had, with the exception of the trees, because they're not particularly a good tree to have on a golf.
Correct.
Counselor?
Nothing from me.
John?
Are you still using the tall fescue along with other species?
Yeah, it's in there.
It'll be a mix.
Okay. Does it's listed as an invasive species, according to the Conservation Board?
Well, that, that type of fescue.
Okay.
There's a Rocky Mountain fescue, and a red fescue, and nodding fescue.
So you're still using the tall fescue, but this is not the invasive species type?
Correct.
Okay. I have no.
Okay, all right, so what do we do with this?
You just, if you're accepting this mitigation plan, we will then ask the team to give us a set for signature, and that will become the approved set of record.
Okay.
So.
I agree with you.
No, agree with that.
Okay.
No issues.
We're go.
Thank you for your time.
This is your slow time of year, right?
No, not at all. Not at all.
Well, we wish you all the best.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Foothill Street Solar. Locations 3849 Foothill Street. How are you, sir?
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
So last we met, and we've been back and forth with our consultant. Consultant did a detailed explanation of all the concerns, I think, that the various boards had and members. And then we see you have responded. Anything you want to comment before we move forward?
No, there was only the one point with regard to the fencing, Mr. Chairman. Other than that, we agreed with and can comply with any of the recommendations.
Understood. Anybody wanna talk to the memo from the consultant?
I think the, for me, the memo closes the issues and concerns that I had and completes the record to the extent I think we can make, you know, final decisions on this application.
I agree.
And, and move it forward. I just wanted to explore a little bit more. When you say you will accept the recommendations, in other words, one of the recommendation, one of the findings that I found significant here was the fact that the forest is, you know, not a good forest in terms of its function, in terms of its health. It doesn't have an understory. I accept that. It's in the record now. It's from our consultant. One of the recommendations makes a lot of sense to me. Rather than just paying money into the tree bank fund, there's a suggestion here that a portion of the other side of the stream that's going to be left as is be enhanced with some sort of deer enclosure or ex closure to keep the animals out and maybe regenerate a more healthy forest on that side. I would like that kind of concept to be explored and put in as in addition.
Mr. Spark, I'd be happy to explore that with the planning department and the town. I, if I'm wishfully reading into what you said, I think you said a pot of the funds to be paid into the tree bank fund might be used for that purpose.
Right.
So obviously, with the landowner's permission and our cooperation, that could be done, and I'd be happy to do that.
To me, that's an active mitigation.
Cool.
Right on the same site, that would benefit what remains.
Nope, that'd be great.
That would reforest that part, sure.
Would help it.
Keep the deers out from eating everything. Like I did in my place.
Any other questions, comments from the board?
I think we should move forward.
Nothing more from me.
John?
I have nothing, other than the, that mitigation, we'll get onto part of the mitigation plan. So that package will change a little bit.
Right.
I don't think it's a hang-up. I think it'll be a plus and a minus situation that equals out.
That would be subsequent, correct, Mr. Tegger?
Yeah.
Yep. We could work through that.
Yeah, and I agree. I think, and I, again, I applaud the board. I know there's a few members here. The fact that the board was proactive and went out and looked at these consultants, not just for the environmental end, but on the traffic end, really gives us a tool to follow that, you know, when people do have concerns, people always have concerns, that we could backcheck on our end and the consultant's end. And at the end, you know, really make any project that comes to us more fully vetted.
It's all about, you know, information and making a well-informed and educated decision, and that's what we try to do.
If I may, in a very brief closing statement, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just would like publicly, this process, I look back earlier this afternoon. The Lady Al Capellini and I presented this project to John Tegger and former town supervisor Michael Grace in October of 2017. That was four and a half years ago. I have to say, I've done 43 solar projects in the last six years. I don't blow smoke at you or the town in Yorktown. I've never been through a process. I'm tempted to say the wringer, but I'll say a process like this. You people have done your job and done your job well. I'd like to thank similarly, the applicant has done its job and done it well. And as a result, we've presented as good a project as we possibly could for you and the townspeople. I appreciate the time, the attention, the diligence, and at times, the patience.
Yeah, right.
That has been afforded to us along the way. Thank you again.
Well, I think you clearly came in at an early stage. I know the code went, that there was a code put in place. Clearly, this is a very new thing to the town.
Oh, absolutely.
And we want to make sure that whatever we do, it's right for the town. So we do have a resolution and a neg deck in front of us that would have to get tweaked?
That can be tweaked, and if you like, we can set it up for the next two-week meeting. We can make sure that we have all of the things in. Consult with Mr. Shanahan on not necessarily having the final mitigation plan, I don't think, but have an understanding of where we're going, and that can be a condition of the approval, unless, unless he's able to turn it around in two weeks, but, and then.
So if you could work closely with John or Robin over the next two weeks.
May I ask, Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
And again, considering it's been four and a half years.
Yeah.
Is there any possibility that my, the board might vote to approve the resolution as drafted, subject to any minor revisions that we have to work through with Mr. Tegger and his staff?
I would yield to Jim.
I don't see why not.
That's, that's a tricky process, unless we know exactly what, we can define exactly what it is that's gonna be revised.
I believe it's only the mitigation plan.
Yeah, but mitigation plan is a major part of this application, so.
But is it the deer enclosure? Is it, is it the mitigation piece, the idea of putting some sort of fencing that would keep deer out of a forested area? Is that what we're contemplating as the change?
It's also what.
And that's just a reallocation of the, of the funds?
Yeah, so I, but also, I think it will involve planting of some understory shrubs, and then, and the deer enclosure will protect them. So, yeah.
But it won't change the monetary amount of the contribution, right? It'll be a reallocation. So can't we take a step forward today and say that the allocation of the funds would be determined? The details of the allocation of the funds would be determined?
I can't see why we can't do that.
That can certainly, you know, in light of, for instance, the par three project, I, I think that you, you can have a condition where you're finalizing your mitigation plan, you know, in, in its details. I mean, I think you can. I defer to Jim on, you know, sort of some of the process things. But from a technical standpoint, I have an understanding of what is needed to go on that mitigation plan to move forward, so.
And just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, and not to be dead hoss, but we would agree to anything and everything that's in the spirit of the recommendations of the environmental consultant, and I'm sure we could work that out with Mr. Tegger.
I just wanna make sure we're clear legally, because that's.
I wouldn't say that I'm clear. I would say that I appreciate the spirit that everybody's bringing towards this, but I think it would be helpful for a mitigation plan. Remember that we're gonna be dealing with this going forward on other sites, and I'd like the mitigation plan to be carved in stone before we vote to approve a project.
Can we declare lead and do the neg deck?
Yes.
Will that help you?
Step in the right direction, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
So yielding to Counselor's guidance, we're gonna hold off on the resolution. But first, I'll make a motion to move into a special session.
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to declare lead agency?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have a neg deck in front of us for the same project. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
And we'll hold off on a resolution till it tees across and the i's dotted at the next meeting in two weeks. Do I have a motion to close this special session?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you again, gentlemen, and to the ladies at each end of the table.
Most importantly.
That's right.
And again, I just want to thank the board for giving us the ability to use those consultants. Thank you. All right.
I used to need consultants to.
Yeah, they pay, but it's the, they went out. Now we have the tools there.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
You know? You know, even something, yeah, even though someone's got to pay for the tools.
But it isn't the town, it isn't the town that pays the consultant.
No, but they went out and vetted.
Yeah.
Right? Good, it's good, yeah. Okay, next on the, uh, agenda, we have the Old Hill Farm Solar. Hey.
The applicant paid for that.
I asked you guys last month.
See that? Uh, this address is five seventy-one East Main Street in Jefferson Valley.
Hi, um, I'm Catherine Honig, I represent Hillside Solar and the Hill, Old Hill Farm, I family's farm, and, um, last time I was here, we got our neg deck and we had some things to button up, and we spent really the month of March doing that, so we have had our visit from the town's environmental consultant, and he signed off on our tree mitigation plan and the wetlands delineation in a memo that was dated April eighth, which, um, Robin was good enough to send to us. I think you should have that in your record, and, um, we probably spent the most time working with John on the site sections and the planting of trees and how best to screen the, um, solar panels, and that included looking at species and size and placement, so we, um, and John actually was good enough to come and visit the site with Ben Reisman, who's with me tonight, and we revised our plan. The revised plan was submitted, I think, today. It's up on the screen, and as a result of the revised plan, we have added an additional approximately sixty trees to our plan, so in effect, we will be planting almost as many as we're taking down under your tree law. As you know, landscaping plans aren't art, not a science, so while I don't think we're going to change, we're not going to change the number of trees per se, the species and actual placement will have to happen in conjunction with John Teggera and our neighbors to make sure that we execute as best we can, I mean, as John will tell you, had to stand there to look, to see what you can see and what needs to go where, so, um, and, well, for good or for bad, the tree consultant is based on the old number of trees, this is an increased number of trees, but be that as it may, we're happy with our outcome and, and think that this is a good plan for everybody. So that being said, I think that we have responded now to, correct me if I'm wrong, John, all of the comments from the planning department, from John and Robin, thank you Nancy too for helping coordinate all this, the tree committee, the conservation committee, the fire inspector, and I think everything we've needed to do in order to hopefully tonight, ask you for final approval, site plan approval and approval of our special use permit. And I don't know if there are any questions from John or Robin or anyone on the board, I'm happy to, Ben and I are happy to respond to those.
I have no questions.
No, no objection. I, I think they are, she is correct, though, that the final placement should be left somewhat vague and subject to field conditions. You know, a lot of things can change, grade can change, um, so, I, I agree with that concept.
Any concerns, questions, or comments from the board?
No, no concerns.
Dan? Good?
Yeah, I may just... Yeah, no, so long as we just have the, you know, the, the standard provision in the resolution for final sign-off on the SWIP, there's, I think there's one minor tweak we want to make, which is really inconsequential.
Okay.
So it'll just be whatever the final, and I guess the landscaping will be tweaked and whatever that final version is anyway. But we're, we're good to go.
Alright, so, we'll work on a resolution for the next meeting?
That's fine.
Go from there.
So do you, should we come back and, we need to do it at the next meeting, or can we do that tonight?
We don't have a resolution.
Oh, we have to draw up a resolution?
Yeah, so a resolution's got to be drawn up, I'll, I'll contact you to make sure you review it, to make sure everything's in order.
Okay, and can we make sure that whatever the tweak is we need to do on the SWIP, we have before that meeting, before that meeting, so that we can make sure everything's taken care of?
Yeah, I think, and he's still in the room, so, but I, I think what he meant to say is that the SWIP is in a condition that he feels can be approved by the board, and any modifications will be minor enough
Okay.
that he will accept them, and then the board, at a later date, will approve the final iteration of it.
Got it.
So that, that's a fairly typical situation, so.
Okay. That's great, Dan, thank you. Alright, so we'll see you in two weeks.
Yep.
Thanks so much.
Thanks.
Have a good night.
Take care.
It's two weeks. What's the date in two weeks? What's the date in two weeks, twenty-fifth?
Okay, next we have a building inspector referral. Location is, uh, two six four one Deer Street, and this is for a solar application.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good, and you?
Good, thanks.
Have any drawings or anything?
Uh, we have the application, so why don't just, for the record, name, your name and, uh...
Uh, my name's Mark, I'm representing Mike Mealy in, uh, the presentation of the, the drawings.
Mark, your last name?
Gearing.
And who are you with?
I'm, I'm just a consultant with Mike.
Okay.
So, the, the, the goal is, we're looking to, we understand we have to go to the, the zoning board of appeals to approve this, because even though it's not in the front yard, there's a street in the back. I didn't know if anyone wanted to look at any of the drawings.
Sure.
So you're going for, for a setback variance, is that right? You going for a setback variance?
Well, no, it, it's more of just, it's twenty-seventh on one side, and seventy-two off the, the side of the house.
Which is the side, this is on the corner of, at Stony and Deer Court, right?
So, yep, Stony, there, this is the driveway up to the garage. So, the panels will be roughly in this area and behind the set of trees.
So do I understand this variance is required because this is a corner lot?
Um, I'm sure I know.
That has two fronts, in other words?
Yeah.
Corner yard would have to...
So, so this is, yeah, so, this, this is your basic approval, it looks like to me. Yes. So, under, in your package, there's a highlighted section of the law?
Yeah.
Small solar energy systems. So this is not a roof-mounted system, so it's not solely building department? And it says that it goes to the planning board for review and action, which can include approval, approval with conditions and denial, unless otherwise decided by section D two of the section, which is up above, so this is, being that it's not a roof-mounted, it is your approval.
Oh, but with the variance is required?
With the variance, it appears probably needs to go to the zoning board, so I think, I think that would be, you would send it to the zoning board with your sense of the project.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, that's sort of like a, for to go to the zoning board.
What's the, the variance is for what, then?
Setbacks, it looks like.
Yeah. Off Stony Street, probably. Probably too close to Stony Street.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty, twenty-eight, and twenty-seven and three.
Twenty-seven, three.
Yeah. John, I thought the, uh, I thought that the solar law exempted, uh, not exempted, but it did not permit in residential areas of less than a couple acres.
Uh, it has to be...
It has to be one acre.
One acre at present, as we stand right now.
You mean, so he would comply if he gets his setbacks?
Yes.
Right, he has one point two six acres.
Well, that's, that's kind of, well, so I...
They're considering upping that from one to two acres.
Well... It was in front of the board the other night, and it didn't, uh, we, we had some other questions, and we left the public hearing open.
Yeah, well, I, I would think the, did the neighbors come out? At the, at the public hearing, did anybody come out against it?
Well, no, they, he was talking about the law.
They're looking at the law.
Look at the law, okay.
I think you'll be doing a public hearing on it.
Alright, some of the questions, I, what, I mean, what's coming down out there? Are all the trees in the area coming down?
The, the homeowner is going to keep as much as he can and then include shrubs to cover it, but, uh, it, it's because it's on a slope.
Yep.
They're already, they're going to be using a natural slope too, so the highest height of the panel would be less than twelve feet.
So we've been very consistent in our reviews of these solar panels?
Okay.
And one of the things that we've told each applicant, one, you have to show us, so we're, we can't guess what's out there.
Okay.
And we need to be able to see that, whatever is out there, there's a project right down the street, that's a town project.
Okay.
We're holding to that same standard, so basically, we've taken the tactic, these things should be basically invisible. So, we've, frankly, from what I see here, it's not, we don't have enough information to really review this.
Absolutely.
So I would think...
So you would need to see what's going to be taken down, and then what's going to be replacing to cover it, to hide it.
Grade changes, this is very close to the road, which adds another layer of involvement. You know, this is something that we would want to possibly refer out to some other boards.
Twenty-seven, yeah.
Get some input. I will be honest with you, these are projects, there was one on, uh, East Main Street in Shrubow.
Yeah.
That went back and forth and ultimately ended up was pulled by the applicant, because it was just, we couldn't come to a...
It was more visual pollution.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So this, this thing's got a, a long way to go.
So I would say, I would sit down with John and Robin, uh, and, and really start to look at this, but I could tell you, there's certainly not enough information for us to do a full review tonight.
Okay.
But sit down with them, and they'll kind of guide you to what we're looking for.
Okay.
And, you know, from what I think they tell you we're going to need, you know, might guide you on the application. Makes sense?
Yeah.
Do you generally, do you know the, the dimensions of the array? I mean, I could kind of guess, looking at it, but I don't know how much the scale it is.
On the back side of that sheet, flip it over, I think it has the mounting on the, the rail mounts. Yeah, no, it was right there, yeah.
But I mean, just the, the array itself, do you have general?
Uh...
Length and...
So, the panels... Yeah, I can, I can calculate it out by just the panels they'll be using.
Right.
Yeah, all, all that information's going to have to be on the drawing.
Okay.
Alright?
Yeah.
We appreciate your time tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You need...
The town board at this point?
No, just the laws.
You know how to get in touch with us, right?
Amendments to the law now before the town board?
Yeah.
Hasn't had a, opened a public hearing already?
We've had, uh, three public hearings, in fact.
And it's going to go up, to raise the minimum lot size?
Uh, well, that's the intention, yeah, um, but the minimum lot size is going to be, what, two and five? Two and five.
You, you can't have a, a, a one-acre lot, I mean, all your neighbors would be able to see it.
Well...
Well, they could see a shed, too, or a pool, I mean, or a tennis court, I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it's their property.
Well, the intention was to, to raise it to two, but, um, it didn't, we didn't vote on it, we, we, um, we put the hearing on hold and, and we're going to, uh, go back into public hearing, uh, I don't know when, but most likely at our next, uh, meeting.
So right now, as the law reads, it's an acre?
Right now, the, yes.
That's correct.
And there's a clause in the law that exempts out projects that are in front of somebody being reviewed, so.
Would this be part of that, then? Okay.
I, it, I believe so.
This is just a building permit application that came in, is that all you filed so far?
Uh, yeah, I think so, because we, we know we have to go to the zoning board, too, so.
Yeah, so I would, I wouldn't do that yet, I, I would get your process here going first.
Okay.
Stall everything else, then we'll get started, we'll get you on your way with some of the information you have to produce.
Yeah.
Which don't, you know, it's a good amount of information, but it's not going to be very difficult to produce, so don't get too worried about it.
Okay.
We'll tell you the things that we need, I'm sure you'll be, uh, familiar with it, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
You too. Alright, next, we have a town board referral, thank you very much. Uh, for EV charging stations, we have Cuddy and Fader, which has proposed amendments to chapter three hundred. How are you?
Hi, good, thank you. Good evening, members of the board. Kristen Motel from the law firm Cuddy and Fader, uh, representing Volta Charging LLC, and Sam Lee from Volta Charging is here with me tonight. Uh, this, as you mentioned, is on referral from the town board, we are proposing a zoning text amendment to accommodate electric vehicle charging stations um, in the CRC and C one zoning districts. And, uh, Volta's seeking these amendments specifically because their charging stations have uh, electronic displays built into the model, and the zoning regulations don't uh, contemplate this sort of sustainable infrastructure at this time. So we want to tell you a little bit about Volta and a little bit about, uh, the, the amendments that's being proposed, and then ultimately, what Volta will be proposing in Yorktown. Uh, Volta is a publicly traded company, they operate the most utilized EV charging system in the country. They also utilize, uh, universal charging, which means their charging stations charge all electronic, electric vehicles, not just, like Tesla stations just charge Teslas, unless you have a special adapter. Um, so these would be publicly available, they would also be free. Um, or subsidized as time goes on, but right now, they would be free. The cost of charging is offset by the digital displays, there's advertising content on the digital displays, nothing is, is free. Uh, but Volta passes along that value to its consumers, to the EV drivers, to encourage the adoption of EV vehicles and the deployment of sustainable infrastructure. And Volta partners with large retailers to install, um, these EV charging stations at, uh, large parking lots or shopping malls, um, places where people are spending a little bit more time and there's a lot of foot traffic. So, the driver can charge for free and people passing by, you can see some, some photos of installed stations around New York and Connecticut here, um, can see those displays. Now, the displays are static images, they are not video, and they are completely silent. Um, they're sort of similar to, to gas station pumps, however, they don't have the sound and they don't have the video playing. Um, so you'll notice that one of the things that John and Robin brought up when we proposed this amendment was, um, we should contemplate the gas station displays too, because these really kind of are the same sort of infrastructure. Transportation, charging, fueling, infrastructure, um, with a way to offset some cost. So the, the displays, um, like I said, they produce no sound, totally static images, and they're not intended for any off-site visibility, um. I shop at the Stop and Shop in Ridgefield, Connecticut, I live in North Salem, but I can tell you, when you pull in the parking lot, you can barely even see the, the digital displays, the way the lighting is on them. Um, they're very tastefully done, they're static images, so they, they don't like, totally get, you know, get your attention and shock you. They are really just targeting the pedestrians, so they're usually centered in the islands closest to the store entrance, they're, again, we don't want to target off-site visibility or driving motorists or anything like that. So the language that's being proposed that addresses these charging stations includes some limiting conditions. Um, one of them is that the refresh rate is no less than every eight seconds, it also requires auto dimming, so the, they dim with the daylight, sunlight, darkness. Um, there's also prohibitions on where they can be located, so like I mentioned, the CRC and the C one zoning district. Um, there's also exemptions that we've proposed from off-site advertising prohibitions and illuminated electronic display prohibitions that are currently built into the signed provisions in the zoning amendments. And, uh, let's see, and Volta is ultimately proposing to install four of these at the Jefferson Valley Mall, closest to the mall entrance, two on each side of the mall, again, where you have, um, folks staying and shopping for a little bit longer, you've got a lot of pedestrian traffic. And then they're proposing two at the Staples. Uh, so that, that's where the infrastructure is being proposed right now, and of course, we, we know we'll be back, um, before you all for amended site plan and, and those applications as this project moves forward. Uh, we do, we do believe that the proposal advances the town's, um, sustainability and economic initiatives that are outlined in the comprehensive plan, aside from supporting fuel independence and supporting fifty percent EVs by two thousand thirty, which is the federal initiative. Um, this is also supporting local business like the mall, because people know that they can go and charge for free. Um, like I mentioned, this is the most utilized charging network in the country, uh, Volta's very unique in how they do this, and it provides value not just to the drivers, but also the local business owners as well. So I'm going to have Sam tell you a little bit more about Volta, and he can answer any questions you may have, too.
I got, I got a question. Does the landlord pay to install it?
Yeah, so I was just going to discuss, you know, building an EV charging infrastructure is very expensive. Landlords do not want to pay for it, um, pretty much no one will pay for it, and so, most EV companies are... Landlords do not want to pay for it, um pretty much no one will pay for it, and so most EV companies are the ones building it out. And that's what Volta is doing, and so to offset that cost, which other EV manufacturers and, you know, builders are also facing, we're trying to offset that with the media advertising.
So these other companies like, I think it's Flow or these other EV suppliers. They tell you, you know, there's all these uh grants, and you're gonna get all this offset from the federal government or the state. And then you get a number, and the number's through the roof. This, by advertising, brings that into kind of reality, is what you're saying?
Exactly, and so, you know, even with incentive programs with utilities, uh for example, Con Edison, we had a bunch of projects on a waitlist, you know, we're ready to get these rebates back, help help offset the cost. And then their funding has kind of run out, right? You know, these projects take a very long time to build. And if you don't do it within a time, you kind of lose it. And so, you know, as as good as those incentives are, it's it's not enough, and so there has to be some sort of offset.
So the advertising, obviously, just like the gas pumps, we're not gonna get talked to though at these.
No, that would never happen, no.
So just so you guys, uh, I I had a crash course in like signs when I was at the chamber, and um, and so uh VOT regulations, uh if 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 the sign is going to be viewable from from the street.
Yeah.
Whether you're pointing it that way or not, if you can see it, um it can only be eight second spot. It can't be any motion, so no videos, um and they have to be PowerPoint style. So no sound, no motion, PowerPoint style, max eight seconds.
So we're not gonna get the plays of the week at these charging.
And uh at the town board, we did have a discussion with them about the advertising, the type of advertising, it's not gonna be anything political or anything like that.
I have um a couple of questions about the law itself. One charging area that comes to my mind is the one that we have at the BJ Shopping Center. Which is not one or two isolated stations, but I, it might be as many as a dozen, you know, all lined up in parking spaces. So is the, would this law permit installation of that type of an advertising sign on each one of those stations?
With the stations, it tells her. They're Tesla.
Tesla.
I'm sorry, Tesla.
Yeah, but supposing there's a, you know, a project.
One of these, each one, so rather than just the Tesla logo lit up, you'd have, you know, I think the answer is yes.
I'm sorry?
I think the answer is yes.
So speaking, speaking from Volta's business model perspective, um it doesn't benefit us to have twelve screens, fifteen screen, twenty screens, and it's just oversaturated, at that point, you know, there are diminishing returns. Um, that's why we do projects with two, four, depending on the size of the lot, that'll be, you know, that'll determine the number of stations that we have. Um, a lot of these other charging companies, they make their revenue based off of, you know, cost per charge. So they're trying to put in as many charging stations in a lot as possible, they're usually tucked away in the back. Um, but what we're trying to do is just have a few up front, let people know that the charging is free. And as they, you know, get a premium spot to go to their local grocery store, movie theater, they can get a free charge.
I got a question.
Yes.
When you set up the uh charging station, do you have to go into the building? Or or can you come off a pole uh with your power?
So we actually do both, um currently with our L two stations, where, which are the more slower trickle charge stations. Um, we're able to pull off with the house power, so we just pull directly from the building. Um, for our DC fast, which we're installing in Staples Plaza, um we would actually be working with the utilities, either pulling off a pole or an existing transformer, um just for that added capacity.
Yeah, but if you had, let's say, I'm taking my knowledge, you have seven stores, each one of them has their own meter. How would you hook into one of the stores?
You're gonna have to go off the landlord meter.
You'd have to go off the pole.
Well, you can go off the landlord meter too.
Well, in some instances, landlords don't have a meter.
I think now it's required, so each store would have. So you you're supposed to have a a landlord meter.
Yeah, but that's.
Each business would have their own.
That that's.
So.
Government, when you have it through your forty world shopping center.
Well, they'd have to probably go in and.
They'd have to come off a pole.
Yeah, so to answer that question, there are, you know, different kind of partnerships that we have. We have enterprise clients, so for example, a Stop and Shop. If we're working with Stop and Shop, obviously, we do still need landlord consent, um but we're able to pull off a Stop and Shop's house power. Um, if we're working directly with the landlord, um we wouldn't disturb any of the tenants, we wouldn't be, you know, trying to pull power from their panels. Our source would either come from the utility, or if the landlord has house power, we would pull off of that.
And you would have your own meter?
That's correct, yeah.
You would have your own meter?
So Volta actually does pay all the utility um as well, so the landlord is not paying it, our enterprise clients are not paying it, and our customers are not paying for it.
I don't think Con Edison will pull more than one service to one property.
Right, alright, well, I'm thinking about my shopping center. I would, I would.
I don't have a business card, but we can exchange.
Depends on whether or not it's it's the fast, the the trickle charger or the.
Supercharger.
Fast, right, uh which is, explain the difference between the two.
Right, so if you pull into an L two charger, you're not gonna get a full charge while you're grocery shopping or watching a movie, it'll take, you know, something like six hours. The intention is just kind of dictating where consumers will shop, so that they can get a top off. So, you know, you know, it'll kind of pay for itself when you go shop and you come back home, um you haven't really lost anything in terms of mileage. Um, for our DC fast, that takes about two to three hours to get an eighty percent charge. Um, so it is a lot faster if you're dining, if you're shopping, um that's kind of like the ideal choice. Um, but you know, as Kristen was mentioning before, our service is free. Uh, before our DC fast, because the cap, the capacity and the demand for charging is a lot higher, um the advertising would just offset and subsidize the cost for our DC fast.
And I I think because. Yeah? Because it's free, you're gonna be drawing a lot of attention to yourselves, right? Because a lot of these things are so expensive. And I think one of the concerns is, like at the BJ Shopping Center, which it sounds like Staples, you're gonna be going to that. You know, that's, that uh complex too, is if we had eight of these things along Route two oh two, that all of a sudden it's gonna be an attractive nuisance, and I think that's the issue. I, because frankly, I don't, if this, if these were scattered, one or two here or there.
That's my concern.
I don't really have any issue with it, I think though, if you have what Tesla has, and there's a line of them, especially if you have a, you know, residential neighborhood next door, or, and obviously, you're not gonna want these types of units screened from that, how do we?
That was my concern, I I think that this law would be enabling that type of use, whether it's for your company or another company could come in and do that kind of thing, I think the law should be adjusted to reflect that concern somehow.
What's the concern? Is it concern too many?
You're gonna have.
If you had twelve of them, eleven to two.
But that's not their intent here, right? Because their their advertising is for the foot traffic, not just the person's pulling up to it.
Someone else can come forward under the law and do that. So if 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 you want that, that's fine, that's a decision you make. As a policy, I'm suggesting that one of the concerns I have is that we don't go that direction, you know? It may not be this company that's saying, we're only gonna do one or two at a time, but someone else can come in and do a dozen of them.
Yeah, but each project is looked upon, I mean, we would, you know, we ultimately would be able to say no.
Well, and we'd have to look at that, well, we have that control, because the, we, in Greenberg, we were looking to put charging stations through our municipal building.
Mm-hmm.
And it's so cost prohibitive, because they tell you, you're gonna get all this funding, and then you get the number, and you're like, where's the funding? Free, come on in.
It's not free, right, their their business model means that it's free to the consumer, which is great.
Right.
And the landlord, which is great, but the advertisers are paying, which is a fairly traditional model.
So that's, I think, the concern, is all of a sudden, you know, town of Yorktown's gonna hear it, and you're gonna have all this, you know.
Well, right, just don't forget that they will require site plan amendment.
So is that, in looking at what we have now, and what, again, I have no problem with the unit personally. It's just the impossible amount that could add up with something like this, how do we?
Well, for instance, using BJ's, which I think there's gonna, they're proposing two at Staples, which is the BJ Shopping Center. Let's just say there was eight out in the front at two oh two, like you said. I think you have all of the authority in the world to not accept that because of the safety concern on top of the roadway. With people going by and being distracted by it, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I think you would ask them strongly to move it to another place on the site.
As long as you feel we have control over that?
As long as we can do that.
I think, I think you can, but it doesn't mean that you can add something in here to make it even stronger. I'm 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 not uh going against that, but but you do have the site planning. And and this law actually evolved first, it became in first as just a sign permit. And the thought process was, well, anything you do with these charging stations, really gonna trigger a um site plan amendment of some sort, because you're going to be displacing regular parking spaces, and you have to make sure, you know, it. So so the point was, why why have these two parallel tracks of getting a sign permit for something that you already need a site plan approval for? So it's a site plan amendment, you have all of the normal authority that you do over the site plan when you're looking at it. You know, in terms of the public health, wel- welfare and safety issues, uh I think that you can strengthen it, if you if you if you care to, it would be, uh, you know, a sentence or two.
I would prefer to see something like a setback requirement or something that would address your concerns about traffic safety.
And in some areas, I'm sure I could think of a dozen places off the top of my head that would make, it would, it would be great, I mean, right across the street here, right, in that complex, you could put them all over the place.
Right, the the thought at present was, and I don't know that, in my thought, I don't know that um this team agrees, but uh originally, we were gonna put them in all commercial zones, and my thought was, let's start with the mall and C one. C one is your typical shopping center, so that there's a large interior area to select from, so it's not impacting uh other areas, such as, um, you know, think of, think of the Catalo Building, you know, where um Edwin's shop is. You know, anywhere you put it in there, it's gonna impact the driver, so I don't I don't know if it's appropriate, maybe it will be.
Oh, yeah, I'll echo that, we we did want them in all uh commercial and business zones, but John said, why don't you dial it back? And he explained a lot of it was the visibility concern, a setback concern. So these are very limited locations right now. Um, and I also want to add that the mall parking lot, and I believe the Staples lot have master sign agreements that also need to be amended on top of a site plan. So I know we've already been working with Washington Prime to to get the, get in the works the master sign agreement, that's gonna be amended. Uh, so that specifically contemplates exactly where on the parcel this sort of thing can go. So you definitely will have two controls built in, the site plan and the sign agreement.
So I just want to, then, in in light of what Jim was saying, to make sure that this isn't a carte blanche.
Right.
Permission to do this, it's still, it's enabling it, which is fine, I have no problem with with that concept. As long as we have the right to review the impacts of of what's going on, uh.
Yeah.
And the law makes that clear enough, I'm fine.
I think it's a brilliant idea.
These are not intended to be.
Listen, it just.
These are not intended to be roadside billboards.
Correct, yeah.
It just, well, you know, it, this is the beginning, you know, it's just like when we got our flip phones, all of a sudden now half the world, everything changes exponentially.
It's crazy, it's coming, because I, in my own family, I have three, three electric vehicles.
I'm just imagining Lee Boulevard now with with ten of these things lined up, next to JV Bagels.
So just, just a question for myself, is is the concern the the actual screen part? Or, because I mean, you know, moving into the future, we're gonna need a lot of charging stations.
Oh, they're gonna be crying for these things.
So, so.
People already are.
So I think with with whatever amendments you guys decide on the law, it should take into account possibly whether or not it's just a standard, you know, charging station, or it has this screen on it. Because you don't want to unintentionally limit standard charging stations, which, you know, that's why, where is the concern? Is the concern with the visibility and the video, the the that portion of it?
Well, I I don't even think uh there's any video. It's just, you know, I I think back to like Nestle water, where there was uh, you know, this distribution plant with light, just regular lighting, and you had residential's right behind it. And they're beating the band now about the lighting. And I just see like Staples or one of those locations where you have residents right behind it. And all of a sudden, you know, they're coming in about the glow of these eight units there, I could just imagine. And I I'm, I think it's a great idea, I just think it's got, just like solar, it's got it, you know.
I agree with, I can, personally, I agree with that, I don't think they should be on the periphery of sites, whether they have this illuminated sign or not, really. Because on the periphery of the site, you're either protecting a neighbor, or you're actually presenting a pleasant face of.
Streetscape.
Streetscape to the to the public, and I don't think that should be hampered by any of these stuff.
Right.
Let me ask you, uh, the size of the uh video screen seems to be large. Suppose the site ordinance asks you to shorten the town, make a hefty size.
Well, so we're we're proposing exclusion from that, so that these are are viewed as their own um like codependent accessory displays, so they do not need to follow those requirements of the sign provisions. Because technically, they're not, they're not just signs, right, they're they're part of this infrastructure, like the the gas pumps and the TVs. And and I will add too, and I know Sam can echo a little bit more of this, the model of um this screen advertising, it it's easily saturated, right? So eight in a row, like that, that's just not something that's sustainable for the market. Um, so I don't think you'd really run into that, and I think the controls that are put in place with the master sign agreement and the site plan amendment kind of control themselves here, and and it's such a limited two districts. Uh, maybe perhaps if we revisit this in in the future, and we want to roll it out in more districts where the lots are not so large, or not so isolated, then certainly, that's the time to talk about setbacks and.
I I think there's so many spots this would really work.
Yeah.
We just want to make sure we don't box ourselves out.
Right.
Right, because you get, you know, La Scala Electric coming in, and all of a sudden, you know, they wanna promote JV Bagels, and you know, I I could just, you can imagine some of the things you see on this end. As much as this is a very well thought out, appropriate plan, we want to make sure that we don't limit ourselves, so that in the future, we.
Just remember where we're at, this is, this is a proposed law.
Yep.
I just, as long as there's something in there that says, you know, that we have the discretion to apply these standards.
Yep.
Considering all the things that we normally consider on a site plan.
We're not locked in. I just want to understand, so proposed law, but we don't have an application in front of us?
No, this is a referral of a proposed law.
Right. The application's coming.
Yeah, they're, right now, they're not permitted at all, the the code doesn't contemplate them, so we have to amend the.
There's nothing in front of it, once this is passed.
Got it.
We'll likely get applications.
And they're out there, you know, every time you fuel up now, you're getting.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so it's already out there, it's so it's.
So my comments are not directed to a particular application, just to make sure that the enabling legislation.
No, right, you understand.
Has the, gives us the tools to review this stuff, or doesn't.
You've given us a lot of information about.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, we've been doing this for a while, we find this usually helpful, to provide the information to you all first.
No.
And I will read, uh, the the law does include a provision that says, compliance with these standards uh shall be regulated through site plan or special permit process, so that's directly in the law.
Alright, so.
Okay, can we write out, do a memo back to the town board?
And what do you would, just so I'm clear, you would like to suggest more meat in terms of your authority under the site plan amendment stage to locate them, is that essentially it?
Correct.
Very good.
Okay. Alright, guys.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Have a good evening.
Have a good night, best of luck. Okay, it looks like we're done.
This the one we abandoned the street on, or something else?
No.
So next, we have a zoning board referral. This is uh ZBA referral twenty-two, Clifford, location sixteen twenty-five Central Street, Honorable Michael Grace.
Yeah, I'll keep, I'll keep my comments just to the application.
Here we go. How are you?
Alright, this is a, this is, this is actually a request to make two substandard lots. Um, this was in the old R um one ten.
Took a wider view.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that's helpful.
Where it is.
Yeah. So um, there's, there's a few of these up there in the neighborhood that have a front um, front on on two streets. So uh, and it actually makes sense, I mean, at one time, they probably worked two separate lots. One fronting on one, one fronting on the other, so just looking to um subdivide it. So it it needs an area variance for both the existing premises and what would be the new construction. And then a subdivision approval by this board as well. Um, what's changed up there, I mean, they have sewers, so that's not an issue, municipal water, municipal sewer. Um, and it really comports with the idea of create, you know, diversifying and making for available affordable housing stock. Um, I um, I know I had a discussion with, at one point, uh, just on a a side note with the town board about taking a look at some of these um uh oversized, would be oversized lots of lots that are really amenable to a to a subdivision. Um, and are just uh out there, they're kind of stray pariah, you know, lots. pariah, you know, lots that don't, you know, it just doesn't make a lot of sense not to do it. Although it would be, I know in certain terms, a substantial variance to both lots in terms of area. But I think conceptually and intellectually, it fits and comports with what, what we try to achieve in the town, which is a diverse and affordable housing stock and without, with very little impact. So this is actually, it it serves some very good policy goals to to take a serious look at it. When the gentleman came to me, and he, actually, I told him, look, you know, it's a, it's a long shot until I went up there and actually took a look at the property. And I said, you know what, it actually makes a lot of sense. And this is exactly what the kind of stuff you want to create in town because it has very little impact and it creates some affordability. I know I have four children and I don't think they'll, none of them are here and, you know, could they, one has left, but at home, but, and I know he's desperately looking and I don't think I'm going to get rid of him, but.
You're right.
You know, because it's, you know, it's sad to say, but it's just, you know, it's it's really, you don't, you don't, even the starter homework around here is is non-existent at this point.
Yeah.
To me, it's something really worthwhile taking a look at. And I don't expect, you may want more in-depth, you know, information on it, but it's essentially conceptually, at this point, that is what it is. We'd certainly like to have your support to further, to move further ahead with the ZBA on it and.
Do first, you're in, you're for the zoning board now?
Yeah, yeah, well, actually, you know, it's like, where do you go? I gotta be in both places. But if I don't have the ZBA variance, I don't go to you. And if I don't have you, I don't go, they can't go, you know, I gotta go back to the ZBA. So it's the chicken or the egg. Who's the chicken? Who's the egg?
This is an R one-ten.
Yeah.
Which is where they all started, all these small lots.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, you know, I, I, you know what, I, I think this is one of the nicest neighborhoods in Yorktown. I really do. It's a, it's a, really is a wonderful neighborhood because it's got, it's got some really nice architecture up there. It's the old, it's the old part of Yorktown. It's actually, you know, it's walking distance to downtown.
It's all walkable, right.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's a great area. It really is. And it just doesn't make sense. You, you have, there's a few of these up here, up here, where they just have an empty space because they were upzoned and basically eliminated the possibility of development. And at that point of upzoning made sense at the time that it was done, but I don't know if it makes sense in twenty-twenty-two anymore. When you, when you're taking a look at all the different pressures that we have, and they aren't going away, and I think you're, you're the last people in front of you, tell you, you got a changing world and.
Yeah.
You know, it's, it's, this is the type of thing that I think is very worthwhile to take a look at. As, as for instance, you have the caretaker's cottage law, which, which, you know, I talked to the town board briefly about, which basically, if you could, if you have enough property to create a second lot without the ability for road frontage, you could put up a caretaker's cottage. But I, so there's some really big oversized lots. I got an app, somebody came in to me, have a very oversized lot. So there may be a hundred and fifty percent of what the zoning requires or a hundred and seventy-five, a hundred and seventy-five percent of what the zoning, or not quite the, but they would have everything, and they, they wanted to build a house for their kids, but you can't even get, under the existing law, you can't get them there with without getting a complete, you know, variance for all sorts of things. And it's a shame because, but you do have some very big lots, which, you know, acre, so you have an acre and a half, acre and three quarters, and you can't create two lots out of it. Or, or if you have, where two acres owning and you have three acres, you should be able to at least dial in some type of ability to create maybe smaller units, but a unit, a living unit. Because I know, if my, I'd love to have my kids around, but I, you know, unless I, if I keep, they, they want to be under their own roof and.
Sure.
You know, so that's, that's kind of, that's kind of the theory behind it. And I think this one has merit. And so that's, that's why I tend to tell them to go, come, come ahead, give, you know, run it up the flagpole. I think it really has.
Let's see what we have to do.
What do you think?
I think we have to move forward.
More oftentimes, you guys are referring over to the ZBA. Because you've reviewed a subdivision and come to the conclusion that it's a reasonable request to subdivide whatever you're looking at. So if you sent over something to the ZBA before you were doing any review on it, I think you'd be telling the ZBA that you agree that this is subdivisible land and should, and should be subdivided. So I don't know that you're ready to do that yet. So I think it probably needs to be looked at from some of the typical run-of-the-mill technicals standpoint, such as grading and things of that nature. Because I think, I think that when you do send to the zoning board, you're really telling them that we think that this can move to an approval for subdivision. You, you do have the issue of the size of the lots because they would be substandard to even the R one-ten.
Right.
From be, from back in the day. So those are the things that I think you need to look at.
Yeah, and it, it, you know, it's, it's a kind of, it's, again, it's what's, it's the chicken or the egg, and I don't know what we end up starting at. But the thing is, it's also, I gotta be cognizant of my client's, you know, investment in soft costs to get there.
Well, before we get too much into the soft costs, why don't we, on our own, go out and take a look at these, these lots? Because like you see a bunch of them in here, they're going to pop up after this. And maybe we start looking at the technical end, John.
Okay.
To see if it's possible. And then let's defer to the next meeting.
Yeah, I, I, I think absolutely worthwhile to, because quite frankly, when he came to my office, I was not that encouraging about it. But when I went out and took a look at it, I said, you know, this actually.
Makes sense.
It makes, it makes sense. And so I think when you take a look at it, you'll, hopefully, at least will get to the, you know, I, I, if it's a complete no, I need to know because then he can end.
Let us take a look at it first.
We've got a site visit, I think, on the twenty-third that we've been invited to.
Yeah. Weekends are bad for me now. I'll just have to take a ride by.
This is the first neighborhood, first neighborhood I lived in when I moved to Yorktown.
Was that?
And it, far away, I think it's the best neighborhood. And I don't, I think subdividing, if you look at some of the other properties, I think subdividing this would not be out of character. With the rest of the development, or what, you know, we can now consider development. Great use of a parcel that, you know, could provide a home for somebody.
Hey, the, the other thing about it, which to your point, whether it would kind of open up a little bit of a floodgate, so to speak, if that's what you're concerned about.
Oh, I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing.
No, I was going to, I was going to suggest that actually, you know, you know, it may be that the, the town board should consider, you know, looking at the general zoning up there anyhow, but you have a lot of what I would say, you know, probably homes that need renovation or reinvestment. And I think one of the things that you actually may spur by this is exactly that. I mean, Bob's right. It's, I, I, I think it's, definitely think it's one of the nicest neighborhoods, just because it's got the feel of it, it's just that atmosphere of it. And I don't think this takes away from it, and I think maybe you actually incentivize, you know, some upgrades.
The catalyst for the area to get up there.
Certainly consistent.
All right, so we'll take a look.
All right, I got the next one too, so.
Ready? All right, we'll move on to another zoning board referral. This is the ZBA number twenty-three, the Wallach Family Limited Partners, locations one five four nine Jacob Road.
I know, I'm going to apologize right off the bat because the ZBA asked and correctly asked me too as well as to where this barn, it's a height variance for a barn, and they wanted to know where it was going to be located on the site. And he did not give, I did, my client was supposed to provide me with the overall site plan so I could actually answer that question. I don't have that tonight. So I, and I think he, I think.
I think it's on the interior. I'm pretty sure of that.
Yeah, it is.
Not near the street.
No, it's, it's back in there. But, and this is the Fox Den Estates. It's a big, yeah, and so, but I certainly, we respect your reservation without knowing.
Yeah, why don't we wait till we get the information?
Yeah, and I, you know, it's just one of those occasions where this came up a lot quicker than I anticipated and he anticipated.
Sometimes these things happen.
The speed in which it came up on your agenda.
When are these, are these both coming back to the zoning board at the end of this month?
Yeah, I, I, they are. But so that, but I, I think in fairness to everybody that's involved in having to make this decision, you should know where it goes because it's a, it's a accessory structure. I think it's a thirty, it's a substantial height variance.
It's pretty big.
Yeah. You know the intended use of it? Is it intended for animals or is it intended for people?
At this point, it's just, George, I mean, Fox, you know, Fox Den is, you know, I get, it states, you know, it's the old Botanical Gardens award-winning botanical, big, he's got a hundred and fifty acres up there. And, and there's a lot of buildings on the property already, and I think he's looking to do, you know, looking to preserve Fox Den in perpetuity somehow, whatever this, however this fits into that. I think it's at this point just storage, but it's, it's, and it wouldn't be out of character, but you should really know where it's going to go, right?
So we'll see at the next meeting.
All right, appreciate your time, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So next and last, but not least, and I lost mine. Yes, discussion on traffic mitigation. And this stemmed last time from the, the, the intersection right up from us.
So you.
And, you know, all the different projects that are probably coming our way, they impact the entirety of the area. And I think as these, even though they're kind of coming individually, I think it'd be irresponsible for the board to look at them one at a time. I think we have to take a holistic look at this. And what is our avenue to do that?
Well, I, I have one comment about that. I can't see holding an applicant to something that might come. Just to give you, for instance, how many times a one-story building came up and stuck a thorn on somebody's side? That one-story building will be, won't be changed in my grandson's sons. You know, so to, to say to an applicant, well, we can't do this for you because this might come. We have to have more definite.
And I think that's what we're, that's what we're looking for.
A definite.
It's just like when the Shrubok International School came in, right? Obviously, we knew there was going to be changes coming to that area. So they paid into the, a traffic fund, I think it was thirty thousand dollars, to look at East Main Street. And they came up with some suggestions. I think the, the board and Dave Paganelly put in a three-way stop at Stony Street, which has helped tremendously on the road. I think there's still more that could be done, but it was a start. And we're not looking to, to hold them responsible for the entirety of the area. And I really think the town holds that burden, right? As you want to see these projects, you want to see the redevelopment or the center. You want to see these buildings that have been left to go and the sidewalks and the curbing and everything around kind of fall on the wayside. You want to see it developed, but you also want to see it done in a way that's responsible so that you don't have, when they build out, you know, across the street.
But what, to take your point, Bill, one of the reasons why I think it's back on tonight's agenda is, I would like to hear, the town is dealing with this, okay? They're not basically casting us loose in the overlay district and saying, you know, do each property one at a time. The town board has had a couple of meetings, which I'd like to hear a little more about tonight, in terms of how we can approach this problem. So that the concerns that you have about being fair to the applicant that's before us, and also considering the ones that may come later, can be dealt with in orderly fashion and not in, in an abstract way. So I think it's important for us to know what opportunities may come down from the town board for us to give us some tools to deal with this problem or to let the town board deal with the issue. So perhaps we can just take a few minutes and hear about what you guys would do.
So we had a consultant come in and talk about possibly a traffic fund or, or whatever you want to, whatever nomenclature you want to give it. There were a couple of different ways of doing it. Each, each, each scenario had a little bit of a problem. One of the main concerns was we didn't want to create an environment where, you know, an applicant comes in, dumps some money into a traffic fund and washes his hands with the whole thing, or her hands, and walks away and says, okay, you know what, I did what I had to do, and now, you know, I'm good. The other concern was timing. You know, you have these other projects that are possibly coming in. One of the, one of the, the monkey wrenchers that got thrown into the mix was, everybody assumed that we were moving forward with Kmart. And then all of a sudden, we come to find out that there's a nine-year lease and, and, you know, now that project, where are they with that? I don't know. The landlord is trying to negotiate with the applicant, the tenant. I don't know how well that's going. But I, I don't, I don't, there hasn't been any movement, let's just say that. So that was another concern. And then I think there was a, a concern about, about whether or not it's legal to do something like that, to actually have this kind of a fund that requires somebody to throw money into it. But you're saying that that's been done. So I'm assuming that that, you know, there was like some kind of a concern with that. I don't recall exactly what it was.
So I, I think we just all have to, you know, really grapple because the way any applicant is treated, I'll say, or how they're handled as they move through the process spreads like wildfire. And if they, if they see that Yorktown is willing to work with responsible development to get where they need to be, they're going to want to come here. And I'm hopeful that with the changes the board has made on overlays and certain things, that you're going to see that attraction to Yorktown. Because clearly, you want to see these areas.
Absolutely.
Redeveloped. That being said, and I think we do treat each applicant with respect, and I think we do go through it as we did with the Con Ed project on Foothill, which they got a, kind of got caught in the crossfire of the zone and a lot of things changing. We just want to do it responsibly. So how do we, with all, we know, the hotel, there's all these things proposed around here. How do we get to a place where I think everybody's comfortable that we have a plan in place to make that? Because traffic's going to be, you know, I, I just go back to the Costco and, traffic, 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 traffic. That's the biggest concern.
I, I think we should treat each applicant at what he's going to generate. For instance, if somebody wants to come along two oh two, I'll tell you another for instance, when we were, originally, when Hill Farms came to us, they had something like a hundred and forty-four units or something like that. Most of the traffic generated at the present time on that road comes from Maybach. And whatever traffic they were going to more generate wasn't going to make that much of a difference because the traffic comes, you know, on commuter time. And now today, with everybody working at home, half the traffic is gone.
And that's where we are in an ever-changing environment.
Yeah, but we held that guy to a hard standard.
Well, we only met with them, if I remember, one or two times, and then they.
I'm sorry, which one?
Hill.
Hill.
Before the soul.
The one that wanted to do the residential.
John Myers. I think it was once, twice, and then they disappeared. You know, but if you look at the, the very important infrastructure project, I'll use the, the Aqueducts, right? Done a hundred years ago. They foresaw what was coming down the pike. I think in some respects, we have to make sure that we're not, you know, again, we want to see these developments, we want to see the upkeep and the, you know, reutilization of these old buildings. We just got to make sure it's done correctly. And listen, everything I'm hearing about housing in Westchester that keep going up, there's no inventory. So housing is going to become prime, just like.
Yeah.
Michael Grace is saying about these small lots, chopper them off. He's right.
Absolutely.
Because the young ones can't find anywhere to live around here.
I, I just want to, I watched one of the town board meetings at which this stuff was presented. There were a number of options that some of the towns in the Albany area are using to deal with these very issues that have worked successfully with different development. So I'm looking forward to being, you know, receiving the tools.[1692.24]
Right.
So that we can do this in a responsible way, that's all.
We should review some of those.
I think you guys are.
Yeah, so we're not reinventing the wheel.
Well, one thing that probably can and should be done is short of creating a fund, which is analyzing what impacts will be from things that are likely to come in. Therefore, you'll be able to know, for instance, in Yorktown Heights, what improvements you need at each intersection in order to handle that. So that's part of the plan.
Right.
What you may not get to is how to fund it, which is, you know, what the town board has some concerns about. But certainly sooner than later, given that we already have the first large one in on the overlay district, for instance, I think we should move forward and hire somebody to study all of these things in depth and have a actual physical plan of what those improvements need to be. And then you can know what the apportionment from each applicant will be. So you'll have, you'll have an idea of, you know, when this guy comes in at this, at this intensity, it's going to be 20% of the cost of this intersection, let's say. And it'll be 5% of the cost of the one, you know, 600 feet down the road.
They did it for the Roma intersection, right?
Yes.
So you have something there.
And that's our responsibility, I mean, in planning.
Right.
You guys are spot on to bring, I'm sorry, you guys are spot on about bringing it up. Because the last thing, trust me, the last thing anybody wants, especially me, is like this, a traffic nightmare because, you know, you're trying to improve something and, you know, you're taking one step forward, two steps back.
And the, right, and the challenge is, for instance, with the first guy in, let's say, will be whether or not he improves anything. Because we know that these things are failing already. And if that, if everyone could be made whole and get the proper improvement closest to the development that's impacting it, you know, he's made whole either later or in another way, that's the win for everybody.
It wasn't some of the discussion here that, you know, in terms of capital investment in infrastructure, that there might be some opportunities that are not necessarily tied to a particular applicant. Because reality is, even if an applicant contributes 20% of the overall cost, you can't do the change, you can't do the fixes or the improvements with just 20% of the funds.
Right, that's true.
So, you know, the reality is, is there a much bigger picture to look at here to say, these are state roads mostly that we're talking about, right? So is there somewhere to go, something to do, to look for some sort of capital infrastructure plan?
Right, and, and you're right. That's the, that's the problem, is if you only get 20%, and then it sits there for 10 years, that's not fair to anybody.
Right.
If there's a way to get that improvement done, and the 80% goes back to the fellow that has taken it on, when these other developments come in, that seems to be a way to get them done, right? So, and also, if we have the overall plan, for instance, the first guy in is going to have impact on this, you know, a large impact on the intersection close to him, but he'll also have impact on all the other ones around, which he would be responsible for. So, you know, if he's taking all that money and putting it into the one, some of the payback comes to the other ones afterwards.
You also don't want to create a situation where one applicant comes in, takes up all the capacity, and the rest of the property owners now can't do anything with their property because all the traffic capacity is taken up, you know? So I think you have to, as John said, assess the potential impact of some of these other sites and put together a plan to deal with it. Funding is always difficult, but, you know, if there are other levels of government involved, you can possibly have some assistance.
Well, New York State, I mean, the roads are, you know, because we're dealing with issues where they work. And you're not seeing any infrastructure. Maintenance is going down, they're low on staff, there's no funding to do, even though we keep hearing, again, we just don't want to, we don't want to miss the boat on this. Like you said, we don't want to do it incorrectly. Dan, I mean, if, between you, John, and Robin, you guys, and I remember, John, you did it with the, across from BJ's, when they were going to come in with that whole back property and the one, yeah, you.
There was, we had some phases that were designed in. That's another story right now with DEP, by the way.
All right, so, and then Phil Greeley, right, Dr. Greeley, Yorktown resident, went and did it overall, kind of master plan. And even the traffic engineer that was here last time, he's Yorktown, or he said he lived here. I mean, between the two of you, can, if, can we put?
I mean, I think part of what we need to do, I don't know, I think we've got to figure out and have the traffic consultant, you know, Underhill being like a key intersection that needs to be looked at, that forgetting about who's paying for it, we got to figure out.
What can be done.
What needs to be done. Because I, because I don't think it's going to be the kind of thing, well, this guy adds 10 cars, and that's going to be, the straw breaks the camel's back. That we really got to project what we believe is going to happen in the Heights and, you know, whatever, the next 20 years, and try and come up with a plan. And, you know, whether we can, you know, dial it back to some extent, based on who comes in. But we've got the master plan of what needs to be done with that intersection. As we talked about, they were brought up last time, like we talked about with the, it was originally the Adrian Auto Mall, where that, that was a public-private partnership where the state paid a third, Adrian paid a third, and the town paid a third. And it got done, and, you know, people thought BJ's did it, but BJ's, we actually, they contributed to, I think, engineering to do the Lexington Avenue intersection. They also, I think, had to put signs on the ticonic because we wanted to direct people, if they're going to BJ's, not get off at 202, but to loop around and come into the new intersection. But all of that sort of requires the big picture of what you want to do. And then to sort of implement ways of funding it. And even, you know, and they want to try and set something up with the state. Because the thing is, if we know the big picture of what we want to do, it puts us in a much better position to seek funding. Because it isn't like an abstract comment, concept, that we've got real plans showing, you know, this is what we want to do. Can you help us? You know, never mind getting through them approving the thing, but can you, can you in any way, you know, because, I mean, they keep saying that this Build Back Better money is going to go to a lot of road improvements. So I don't know how it trickles back to us, but if it does, we'd be ready.
You have a shovel-ready project.
Exactly.
So, and to traffic and the other infrastructure, water, sewer. I mean, we had a meeting with Con Ed in Greenberg this morning. It's, one of the guys said, I don't think we're going to have gas in 10 years, they're going to outlaw it. So are we ready, infrastructure-wise, past the traffic, to handle these developments? You know, sewer capacity, the water infrastructure, those types of things, even stormwater. You know, I think we have a real chance here for this downtown, and you just don't want to miss that boat. So I think we have to really.
Oh, you have to. But you have, also have to make sure that it happens and not far later than it should.
Right.
And that, that's the real difficult part. You can plan for it and have the plans, you have to have the backing of everyone in town in order to impose those conditions as painful as they may be. And that's, that's where it gets very difficult.
But I think if a developer, and I've always been guided from the other side, that they like consistency. If they know what you're headed into, they'll, at least they know. It's not the great unknown. It's like form-based zoning. You know you could do X, Y, and Z.
Just they want to know it advanced, yes, they do.
So if we could come up with a plan and it's going to be, listen, this is possibly what the cost is going to be, I think they would welcome that.
BJ's, by the way, contributed $100,000. That was part of their, condition of their resolution, which didn't get paid for like 10 years.
I heard that Susan Segal was going to donate $500,000 to the town.
I think she might have, because finally.
Very generous of Susan. So you, I, I tell you.
That's on the record.
She never ceases to amaze us.
But ultimately, in the BJ's thing, you know, we kind of knew we needed a right turn lane at Lexington Avenue, and eventually it happened. So they paid, you know, they participated.
I think, did they way back when? I think that they contributed to the Pine Grove light.
Well, I take that back, they did both things, the Pine Grove light and Lexington. I think on Lexington, they gave us a survey.
Okay.
But it, but it was, my recollection was those three elements. It was Pine Grove, some, something on Lexington and signage on the Parkway.
But Pine Grove didn't happen until the state was doing their project, which they just did a few years ago.
You know, and again, I, I just remember when the, they proposed little, the small boutique hotel came in, I thought that was a great application. And then right across the street, you have the Yorktown Capellini Building, which needs parking. And it was, there was, you know, talk about all the, you know, even the parking in the area. So how do we work with engineering, planning, the town board, and I think the planning department, or the planning board and the other boards, to get that in place and to a point where everybody's comfortable as these developments start to come in?
You know, again, I think unfortunately, we should hire a consultant to help us prepare a plan. You know, to study it just from the traffic standpoint, but also what you're talking about is some of the parking issues that will be happening in the future too, to make sure that they're, you know, afforded properly.
Wasn't that study done when the overlay district was being considered?
They did a, yes, in part. So they did projections of build-out and applied numbers to that. But what we need to do now, I think, is actually do actual traffic counts and, you know, do much harder numbers.
Stronger study, okay.
And if you think about it, the Heights area is a little bit of a victim of the 70s, right? I mean, we've got seas of parking lots and people would say empty stores and so forth. So the next model has got to include some sort of mixed-use residential and retail, which is obviously, it is about the traffic, but it goes beyond that, right? We need, the Kmart, that's, that's a huge opportunity for our town.
Oh, yeah.
Now, we're hung up on this idea of the lease and all that kind of stuff. But when you think about, you look at places like Norwalk, where, and other small cities that have done a mix of residential and retail and made it more of a walking environment than necessarily a driving environment. And that makes things like the Soundview project make even more sense because people can walk from there into town.
Yes.
That's what I was talking about last time, with the integration of that site into the rest of the.
So it's not just cars.
No, no, yeah, it's everything, parking.
I mean, said, we probably have enough parking in Yorktown Heights.
Oh, my God.
We just, to get people to get out and walk around. But to that end, I mean, the other thing is like, say something like, you know, the Oster comes in on the Kmart thing, to have them do some type of parking that wouldn't discourage people who are going to other things in town. Because we've got the parking, it's just a matter of people walking around a little bit.
There's so much parking. I mean, I look right across from you, JB.
Oh, yeah.
The Club Fae.
One's utilized.
I mean, it is, I, I've been here over 20 years now. I've never seen anybody in that line.
No.
It just, there's asphalt everywhere.
Even those, you go to those, they have to, have to lot as empty as possible.
Wait till Trader Joe's opens.
Yeah, don't worry about it. It'll be like the Popeyes, right? When you have the line and then it'll all.
Well, except I think Trader Joe's, it'll just, it'll sustain.
On your turn to root now.
I think you really have to take a, a big-picture look, you know, at the whole Commerce Street area. Because right now, if you wanted to do three things on Commerce Street, you wanted to get a cup of coffee at Starbucks, you wanted to get money out of Chase, and you wanted to eat at Papoose, how would you do it? You'd pull into Starbucks, you'd deal with that whole crazy parking situation they got going on there. You'd get your cup of coffee. Then what do you do? You walk across the street? No. Because you can't, right? Because the cars are flying by and.
I walk across the street all the time, Sergio. You got to look both ways.
You get in your car. I'm glad you're still alive. You get, you get in your car, you come out, you make a right, you go down to Chase, you pull into Chase, you get out, you get your money. Now you want to go next door to Papoose. What do you do? You come out of Chase, you make this crazy left, left, and then you're in Papoose's parking lot.
I'm sorry, Sergio, I went to Citibank today and I just walked around to Papoose to get my sandwich.
Is it good? What'd you get?
It's good, I got a gyro.
Of course.
You might have had that Sangria with the special mixture in it.
Leave your car at Chase and have the Sangria.
I don't know how we fix that to encourage people to walk around the Heights, you know, it's, and that would.
I think, I think we have an opportunity here.
But we'll get into them on another time.
All right, so we got to start pushing, I guess, the town board respectfully to get that study going. Does that sound, so do we do a memo? That, listen, we've got this overlay.
You want me to draft a memo?
Yeah.
Be happy to draft a memo.
Please.
Send it over to us. We, you know, we had, we had a consultant talk to us about this. You know, we, you know, we are looking at these kinds of things as well. You know, and, you know, at the idea that we want to make sure that, you know, traffic is mitigated properly and, and while we, while we bring in these new developments, that will hopefully enhance the town.
Yeah, I think it could be done.
I think it has to be done in a spirit, I don't want, I don't want to put words, Will, I don't want to put words in your mouth. But it has to be done in a spirit that it doesn't stymie the potential of development.
No, I agree.
Because otherwise, if it's so onerous and so bad, people, they won't develop, and then you just, it's just everything follows.
It's like, again, if you look at like form-based zoning, where you know, if you're a developer and you're going to come in, this is what I could do.
Right.
And is it work for me? If it doesn't, you're going to go somewhere else.
They want to be a part of a community that's going to thrive.
Yeah.
They're not, you know, they're not looking to be the sole player.
I think, I think, I think it could be done. All right, do I have a motion to close the meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor.